Mr. Chairman, everybody is in from the waiting room.
Okay. Everyone's in. Welcome everyone to the Wednesday, January 26th, a public hearing. Rockport Planning Board. My name is Jason Shaw. I'm the chairman. The other board members are present with one exception. Peter Cutner, Denise Donnelly, and Tom Mekus. We're all here, as am I. We're missing Harry Korsland, but I don't think he's going to be here. He's traveling. So anyway, the four of us are here and our consultant from Metropolitan Area Planning Council, Chris Kushel is also present and he's going to be participating in the meeting. Before I begin, I'm going to just read as quickly as I can. Oh, there's Ralph Wilmer also from MAPC. Well, there are two people there. I'm going to read the meeting notice as quickly as I can. Just to, and it will help, I think, everyone just to focus on some topics for this meeting. Pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, Sections 5 and 11, and Chapter 41, Section 81Q, please take notice that the Town of Rockport Planning Board will hold a public hearing at 6:30 PM on January 26th. And then, then one tomorrow, too, but that doesn't matter right now. The public hearing will be via Zoom and the Zoom links to the public hearing have been provided prior to the hearing on the posted meeting section of the Town of Rockport website. Public hearing, the one tonight, will be on the proposed changes to existing zoning bylaw. The Planning Board has been working on these changes with the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, MAPC. They're formatting, and these include formatting and organizational changes, substantive policy changes and changes to eliminate or change antiquated provisions of the zoning bylaw. These provisions require a two-thirds majority vote at the town meeting for adoption, as opposed to other provisions which we'll talk about tomorrow, which only require a simple majority vote. These, the subject of this public hearing include, but not limited to, the following: Updating the table of uses, reorganizing and updating the definition section, eliminating or updating out-of-date sections such as Section 6A, 7, Section 8E, and Section 8P, reducing the lot size for two-family dwellings in the R District in Section 6B, changing the parking requirements to eliminate wasteful parking requirements and reflect best practices using flexible parking principles in Section 7, simplifying and clarifying the provisions of the Water Supply Protection Overlay District in Sections 8 to make the bylaw consistent with water supply protection regulations of the Department of Environmental Protection. I'll more to say about that later. I think we're going to have a discussion about, I'm going to recommend that that modification be held for the fall 2022 town meeting and that it not be considered at this meeting, and I'll explain why later. So if you had a lot to say about that, you've just been relieved of your obligation. Establishing a threshold development size for the subsidized housing requirement of Section 8, I, and then Section 9, eliminating waivers for housing construction in the coastal floodplain district, Section 15, strengthening zoning enforcement, including financial penalties, and finally, Section, dividing Section 15, Special Permit Issuance Authority, depending on the type of permit between the zoning board of appeals and the planning board. All public, all persons shall be given an opportunity to be heard, and the rules for the conduct of the public hearing can be found on the board's webpage. And I hope everyone took a look at those because they will apply here. And then, of course, the text of the questions were available for viewing in hard copy at both the Planning Board Office and the Town Clerk's Office, as well as being posted on the webpage of the Planning Board. So before we open the public hearing, there are just a couple of things to, first, a couple of housekeeping rules here. This is a public hearing, and what that means is we're here to hear what members of the public have to think about the things that we've been working on for quite a few months now with Chris Kushel and Ralph Wilmer of MAPC. And we want to hear your thoughts and comments about provisions. The idea here is there may be things that we've overlooked or things we want to change after hearing from you. We, that's the whole point of a public hearing. We, the rules here are as follows. You'll have, everyone will have a chance to comment on what we're talking about here. Please limit your comments to the matters that are scheduled for tonight. In other words, we have some other provisions in the zoning bylaw that are scheduled for tomorrow, and we'll have a public hearing for that. So let's hold comments about that until the public hearing tomorrow. Everyone's going to have one chance. We're not going to, we're not going to play Jack in the Box. In other words, you're going to have your chance to comment. Once you, once you've made your comment, that's it. You're done. We're not going to get up for a second or third or fourth comment or respond to somebody else's comment because that's just not the way a public hearing should be conducted. We do generally have a three-minute limit on the length of comments. However, considering the nature of this public hearing, I think that it would be advisable and fair to have a little flexibility with that because, you know, sometimes people have comments that go beyond three minutes, and that's understandable in this particular case. Please identify yourself by your name and address before you begin to say anything. Before we begin taking comments from members of the public, I'm going to look to Chris Kushel to give us a succinct overview of what is being considered at the public hearing tonight and what will ultimately, could ultimately be considered at the town meeting this April. And he has PowerPoint to discuss that. We're going to try to keep that as brief as possible, but at the same time, kind of give everyone an overview of what the provisions are here. Because there are a lot of them, and it can be confusing for people. I know people may have questions. Maybe it'll answer some of your questions. So Chris, why don't you take it from, from here at this point?
Okay, thanks. Give me one second while I get the slides ready. Share my screen. Thanks for having me tonight. Let's see. Can you all see that? I assume so. Okay, so yes, I will be as succinct as possible, given the breadth of what we're covering. So I'm expecting this to be about 15 minutes of an overview here. So first of all, Jason, thank you for that. Your introductory remarks in that overview, that that covered a lot of this. I think one thing I just wanted to maybe hit on was terms of this process, it's played out over close to two years, a little bit less than that. And we've had numerous planning board meetings where this has been discussed. Our role at MAPC, just to clarify, is as a consultant. So this was the, the content is very much driven by the Planning Board. We have provided our advice where appropriate, or sometimes some options to think about, but ultimately, we are sort of carrying out what the town wishes. I mean, so just broadly speaking, in terms of what we're doing, this sort of a spectrum of changes from some very simple, what I'm calling nuts and bolts types of changes, such as Jason mentioned, like things like reformatting, and I'll give a little bit about what we're talking about there, to things that are a little bit more significant in terms of policy, and some of that we are going to discuss tonight. And then tomorrow night is where we're focusing on what I think are some really more substantial changes. So I'll hold off on those. So I'm sort of going to start from the simplest and then move into more of the impactful policy types of proposed changes. And so as such, the order that I'm going in isn't necessarily the order of the beginning of the bylaw to the end, but more in terms of the, what I think of as the significance. So the first kind of group of changes, really, they're just formatting changes. The intent here is to make the bylaw more user-friendly. You've had a bylaw that has really never had a comprehensive kind of look to see what could be changed, what could be streamlined. At the same time, almost every year, you are adding to your bylaw a little bit. And so it makes sense that eventually, things get a little bit sort of inconsistent or just not up to best practices. So the things that we did here that included, they include proposals to reorder the sections. So for example, moving your definitions from where it is within Section 1C to its own section, Section 2, which is what we often see, taking your section on site plan review, moving it towards the end of the bylaw so that it's adjacent to the administrative section, adding things like sort of a side tab to help the user keep track of where they are in the bylaw, what section they're in. Because you have so many different bylaws that have been added over the years, the numbering and system and the spacing and the way various words are either used, such as bylock, was spelled four different ways. You have the same abbreviation abbreviated four different ways. So things like that, that we're really just cleaning it up. There was also some sections that, where there's language where we didn't change the, in any way, sort of the, what the, what the bylaw was conveying, but just simplified the language. You had your section on trailers that was an entire paragraph that was a single section, single sentence, and very hard to understand. And so the board made suggestions to simplify that. The second batch, then, of changes is within the definition section, and that there is quite a bit of back and forth with the Planning Board in terms of getting the section right. Definitions are really a very important component to the bylaw in terms of how it functions and how clear the bylaw is. And so there were a number of kind of buckets of changes here. One was to remove unnecessary definitions. There were a number of definitions that you had that aren't used anywhere in the bylaw. You really should only be defining terms if, if they're actually used. There were some cases where there were important terms that were not in the bylaw definitions. So we, in those cases, proposed to add those. There were also a number of existing definitions where they're being proposed to be changed to really help clarify what the definition is. One example was the definition for an "in", and this was based upon best practices, as well as just in terms of what the town is trying to convey with, with the term in question. And then finally, you had a number of definitions that were just found throughout the bylaw. And generally speaking, a best practices is to consolidate everything within the definition section. And so that's what is being proposed. There were several sections or subsections, I should say, where the proposal in the, is being proposed to actually remove that for a few different reasons. And so there's three in particular that I want to call attention to. Within your uses section, there is sort of a subsection of these provisions related to retail and commercial uses. And these are provisions that, they're not standard. We actually haven't really seen anything like this within other zoning bylaws. They're unnecessary. So for example, it's dictating the number of restrooms, which is already covered by your building code. And in some cases, they're arbitrary. There isn't a very clear logic in terms of why it would be some certain provision about, that's really dictating the interior usage of a retail space. You have another section on, that's called exterior lights for non-residential uses. And the proposal is to take that section and put it in your general bylaws, remove it from your zoning bylaw. And the main reason for that is because your section of exterior lights for residential uses is in your general bylaw. So this puts them together and it makes it consistent. And then finally, there was a section on microwave antennas that the board felt was obsolete and is just essentially taking up space that's unnecessary within the bylaw. Within the dimensional standards, there was a couple minor changes, or I should actually say clarifications, to both height and stories to ensure that they're calculated consistently. So with height, the definition is based upon, in part, upon the existing lot grade. So there's a note that actually just defines what existing lot grade means. And then many of your uses have a maximum of two and a half stories, but it wasn't clear exactly what two and a half stories means. And so there's a note to calculate that, which ensures that this would be consistent across all projects. It also ensures that a landowner couldn't sort of try and get a full third story, but say it's a half story, because now it's, it's clear what, what we mean by half story. Now we're getting into a little bit more of the significant policy changes here. And so this, I'm going to spend a little bit of time on, this first batch has to do with residential uses. The reason to make these changes, it's really consistent with whatever's best practices for a small New England town such as Rockport, and it helps achieve goals that the community itself has set. In particular, several years ago, there was a visioning study, and I'll talk a little bit more about this tomorrow night, but the number one priority from the town residents was increasing options for housing. And, and this goes a little bit of the way to help achieve that. One has to do with changing the lot size for two-family homes, and I'll discuss that in a minute on another slide. Another is updating the table of uses to allow mixed-use development, mixed-use buildings in the downtown. So when I say mixed use, what we mean is the ground floor would have your retail, your shops, your restaurants, but now it allows residences potentially above that. Still have to meet parking requirements because there is parking associated with that. And if they can't meet the parking requirements, then, then they simply can't develop in that way. There's also a proposal to update the table of uses to allow for townhomes and small multiple dwellings, up to four units, within your residential R District. So within your zoning, and within the town, you divide it up into a number of districts. You have several residential districts. Each one varies slightly in terms of lot size that's required, the intensity and things like that. Your R District is actually a really good location to allow for things like townhomes and these smaller, multiple-unit dwellings because your R District is located within walking distance of the train station and your downtown. So this is the area that is already by its nature walkable, and this is where you'd want to kind of locate these types of potential uses. In terms of the two-family, to be consistent with a single family, I think this diagram really just tries to illustrate that. For a single family, the minimum lot size is 10,000 square feet. Right now, for a two-family, it's 15,000. That's actually unnecessary because the, the height limitations and your minimum setbacks on your front yard, your side yard, your rear yard, that actually drives the maximum size of the structure. So whether it's a single family or a two-family, you actually can't build a larger structure. This is, you could get, let's say, a 4,000-square-foot home of a single family, or it would be two, 2,000-square-foot homes in a, in a two-family, the structure itself is the same size. Okay. Now moving on to the parking requirements. So this has a little bit of a combination between the kind of formatting type of things to be user-friendly, as well as updating it to be more consistent with best practices, as well as adding clarifying provisions. So your use, your table of uses in your dimensional standards are both within tables, whereas today, the parking requirements is essentially just one long narrative text. And so a best practice is to consolidate that into an easy-to-read table. So that, that was sort of the first step. There are also proposed changes to the requirements themselves to essentially be reflective of what we know today as best practices, which reduces unnecessary impervious pavement within the town, as well as unnecessary cost. And then finally, clarifying when potential reductions in the requirements could be allowed. Today, it's allowed through a special permit, essentially without any sort of guidance on why that would be justified. So it's fairly arbitrary. This clarifies what the process is and clarifies what the justification should be based on to, to actually obtain that special permit. This table, I'm not going to go through here. We can refer back to this if needed. But this is a comparison of the existing parking requirements to the proposed changes. I just kind of hit on a couple things. Overall, I would say the, the changes are fairly modest. There, there's nothing really hugely, in my mind, major changes here. Another thing I would just call attention to, today, the parking requirements for retail, banks, offices are all kind of the same, and often they have different needs. So we're, we're proposing to separate those out as well. Those, in my mind, those two, the housing one and the parking ones, I think, were the, the kind of, in my mind, the big ones for tonight. But there is a few other things I do want to sort of mention briefly. One is you have a requirement that's, you call it your housing balance section. Other bylaws would call this inclusionary zoning. Essentially, what it is, is a requirement for, for deed-restricted affordable housing. Today, it's required for all housing developments authorized by a special permit. This is something that, that is not a best practice. Essentially, everyone we've seen always has some sort of minimum threshold for when that, this requirement would actually be triggered. The reason for this is that affordable, adding these deed-restricted affordable units comes with a cost to the developer, and if you required them on even small projects, it simply wouldn't pencil out. So we're, we're proposing to have this requirement be triggered at developments of six or more units. And that's, that I think is a fairly standard number. I'd also just note that the town is planning to go through a much more in-depth housing production plan and housing needs assessment, I think, over the coming year. And so there could be more changes to this housing balance section. Certainly, there were other things that we saw that could be changed, but we felt like this was just a kind of an intermediate step before those other proposed changes may take place in the future. Couple of those kind of more minor things in my mind. One is within the coastal floodplain section. There's, right now, there's a subsection which essentially allows for development in certain circumstances through a special permit. The board felt that this could allow for substandard developments and, and kind of lead to environmental degradation. So the proposal is to remove that subsection. And then there was a proposal to add some provisions related to financial penalties and clarifying the, the process for, for when there are violations to the zoning bylaw. And the intent here is to actually strengthen this document and ensure that there are mechanisms for enforcement. And then finally, there's a, this clarifies now that the special permit granting authority is both the zoning board of appeals in some situations and in a few situations would be the, the Planning Board. Today, there's actually a bit of a conflict because as of today, the bylaw is written in one section that the ZBA is always the permit granting authority, but within the OSRD section, that's your open space residential development, it actually says that it's the Planning Board. So there's a little bit of a conflict there. So this would resolve that. And then other proposed bylaws where the Planning Board would be, the special permit granting authority is for accessory dwelling units, which we're going to talk about tomorrow night, and a proposed transit-oriented village overlay district, which we will also talk about tomorrow night. And then finally, for waivers of parking requirements. So I think, Jason, was I succinct? I tried to...
Yeah, that was good. I think you covered, you know, it's a lot of ground. I think you covered it well. Obviously, it's not a substitute, or if someone really is interested for actually meeting provisions, but at least it covers it. So I think we're, we're at a point now, Monty, where we can start. We can open the public hearing here for members of the public, and we'll just go until we're done. So... People have to raise their hand.
Christine, you've been unmuted?
Okay, thank you. Let me just do this. Hang on. All right. I just wanted to say that I lived in Charlestown for 30 years and I watched, I watched, pardon me?
You didn't say your name?
I beg your pardon.
Say their name where they will live. Sorry. Go ahead.
Christine Downing, 19 Parker Street.
Okay, thank you.
I lived in Charlestown for 30 years and watched it go from a single-family, three, three-floor row houses to three to four condos each. And the impact was significant. I know that Charleston is not the only town that suffered from this, but it, the population density is, makes people irritable, to say the least. And of, of course, I can see this, the potential of this happening. You know, any, any place around from the, from where the train station is to, you know, downtown. And I hope that the, somewhere in this, you'll take that into consideration because it grows over time. So if there, if it's, you know, if people are, are building second buildings behind their houses because it's been allowed, you can't reverse it. And the density is, I don't know how to say this. Just, I, I would hate to see what a more pleasant environment be ruined by that. Already on my, on my street, I see, there's, next door to me, there's a, an expansion of a house, of a house that is behind the house in front. And that mother-in-law apartment became a B&amp;B and added one to cars. And now that the cars from the front and the cars from the rear house are now spilling over into the street. So then, then the parking disappears. So this is no news to you, but I just want to say it's happening. So, you know, and when someone comes in and says, oh, it's just a mother-in-law apartment. And it's just, just walking distance. And on the other side of me, I have a house that, that was rented until COVID, and that house can fill up, and then everybody comes and visits, and that can, that can add five or more cars. You know, that's on who records, and then that starts, starts to go well. Anyway, so that's enough. I'm sure you don't need to hear more. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Christine.
Jason, can I respond to any of the comments?
Yeah, I, I mean, I was going to say something, but go ahead because you can say it is better, as well, or better than I can.
Well, just a couple things. First of all, Christine, thank you for those comments. I, I appreciate them. I actually live in Charlestown now, and I would just clarify that. I don't think many of us are irritable about the, the built form there. I live, do live in a single family, but I do hear your concern that you don't want Rockport to turn into Charlestown. It's a different environment, and I do think you would be pleased on a couple of things. One is that the, the requirements as it relates to the yard setbacks and the open space and the parking are, are very different from a place like a downtown neighborhood like Charlestown, that you don't have to, it would, the built environment would never be the same. So it's not going to be, it's not going to turn into Charlestown, which I know you've escaped. In terms of issues of the accessory dwelling units, the in-law apartments, we're going to talk a lot about that, and I think you're going to be pretty pleased, actually, because we're, we're really strengthening the provision to, to disallow things like these short-term rentals. But we're going to talk about that a lot more tomorrow night.
Thank you, Chris. I think that answered... Thank you, Chris. I think that answered some of Christine's concerns. Tomorrow night, Christine. You want to talk, it sounds like you're interested in the accessory dwellings, so tomorrow night would be your night. Okay, next.
Nancy, you've been unmuted. Please state your name and address for the record.
This is Nancy in Robert Duda, twenty-one Smith Road. This is Bob speaking.
Okay, so are you speaking in unison or are you?
Yeah, we're speaking in unison.
This is Nancy's here as well. This is Bob's question.
Yeah. These are comments to the proposed changes to the twenty nineteen zoning bylaw redline. First off, I want to say I think you guys did a really good job. I can see all the work that was put into it and I want to acknowledge that, so kudos. Most of the comments, I got four comments in the definition section and the first one, Chris, goes specifically to your intention to make everything more internally consistent. And in the pages, by page number of the redline, on page three under building coverage, it says something to the effect of including accessory buildings. And I know what you mean, but you don't define accessory building. You do a good job up above defining the accessory dwelling unit and you decide to find the accessory structure. I would suggest that maybe you might consider saying that the building coverage includes the ADU and the accessory structure. I think that just might be a little tighter. I also noticed on page five that the garden and utility shed got deleted. And I'm suspecting that's because it got rolled into the definition of accessory structure.
Is that true?
Is that true?
Can we unmute Ralph Limer because he was the lead on the definitions? I I thought that that term was actually, from what I recall, wasn't actually used anywhere else in the bylaw, and that's why it was removed.
I mean, it could be perceived as an accessory structure, so. I'm just curious.
Yeah, we can check into that, but that was my recollection that it was just a unused term.
Okay, the my most substantial comments are here under the on the page five, under the gross floor area. The existing GFA is sort of a hot mess, and I think you guys have done a great job trying to tighten it up. The part where you refer to the subsurface basement as being excluded is perfect. I think it should be a period and a full stop right there. But then you go on to say, and attic space with a ceiling height of not more than seven feet at its highest point is included. I believe you mean to say that it's excluded. That the the area under seven feet inside of an attic would be not be habitable space. It seems like only space above seven feet should be included there. So I think that's a typo.
Thank you. Does somebody from the board, who I know the board had spent a lot of time discussing that today, that that sounds like that's probably right, that that needs to be changed?
That is correct, and we did change that. And both subsurface basement and attic space with ceiling height that's less than seven feet are both excluded. So I don't, you know, I don't know how, that was a good catch, Bob.
Yeah, and 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 Jim and Shaw, I have I have one one more comment and it's it's it goes a little bit beyond. Within the definition of the GFA, you you refer to the GFA as the the interior or the perimeter of the exterior walls. And if you have a single floor home, that makes an awful lot of sense, or if you have a, you know, a two, two and a half story home, that makes an awful lot of sense. But in Rockport, there's a number of homes that are one and a half stories. My home, for example, is one and a half stories and and on my second floor, my only exterior walls are my gable ends underneath of my dormers and underneath of my gables. I have interior knee walls, but those all sit underneath of the roof. So I think that the the definition for defining GFA, you just need to go a little bit further to figure out how to properly get that second floor. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I I I'm looking at the definition here. And what what do you, what do you recommend should be changed?
I talked to Paul about this and he had suggested at one time just using the interior dimensions, you know, under the knee walls. But but when I see what you what you're asking for under attic, i- it seems you should be internally consistent on the second floor and you shouldn't count area under the eaves that's less than seven feet either.
Are you looking under the definition of gross floor area?
Yes, I am. So for a first floor, it makes perfect sense.
Within the perimeter of the exterior walls of the building. Combination of buildings. So that that actually is existing. I mean, we're not, we didn't write that, that's existing provision, but you're you're saying that that you think it should be changed.
I'm saying that it's not comprehensive enough. It covers it covers like a single floor home or it covers a two and a half story home. But for and there's a lot of it in Rockport that are just one and a half stories where there is no exterior walls on my second floor.
Technically, even with a two and a half story, it's the same problem. I think it's written with the assumption that the first floor gross dimension exterior wall is coming up and then your next floor can be sixty-six percent of that, but you're right, we could clarify that.
Yeah, I think I think it needs to be, sir.
Okay, well, that's good.
And then and then I have one last comment, and this is on page fifteen, under the non-conforming building uses. Part E, the use discontinuance. I I really applaud this. I think this is a really great addition because all around town, I think you see examples of this. And I would I would urge the planning board to to go one step further because you're adding this. You should add a section or a paragraph that says, how do you, how do you actually determine that that structure has not been used for two years and that the owner has essentially abandoned or surrendered their right to continue the non, the non-conforming use? I think you need to put in some enforcement component on that, but I really think that's a great section.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, those are my comments.
Toby, you've been unmuted.
Uh, thank you, Toby Arsenean ninety-five Granite Street. Could you please first hear the building inspector? I would like to hear what he has to say first. I I have extensive comments. He should go first.
Paul?
Well, Toby, wait a second. We're not going to be commenting on what the building inspector says. You want to hear him? Fine, but we're not going to be commenting on what somebody else comments on. So I just want to tell you that right now. So if you hear what he has to say because it maybe saves you some time, fine.
That would be the hope.
Okay, am I good? Jason, this is Paul Orlando. Um, I want to, first of all, I'd like to thank the board for all the work that they've done on this. I think it's really good work. I just have a couple of minor things I'd like to talk about. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, okay. One of them is in the definition section, there's a definition for lot comma buildable, a buildable lot. And I don't see that term used anywhere else in the bylaw. So I think maybe that might be something to look at eliminating. Because a lot technically isn't buildable until it complies with the bylaw and you get portable water, sewer, a septic system, compliance with the Conservation Commission. So if we're not using that term somewhere else in the bylaw, maybe we could just eliminate that term from the the definitions. The other comment I had was there's a section about the planning board waiving parking requirements. And hopefully, we can have a procedure for that, or is it a special permit? Or is it a variance? I I'm not sure what the procedure would be for that, so maybe we can clarify that at some point. And then at the end of the bylaw, there's a section for non-criminal disposition, which I think is fantastic. It will allow me to to write tickets for zoning violations. I think maybe those fines should be bumped up a little bit because a twenty-five, a twenty-five dollar fine hardly makes makes it worth my time to even write the ticket.
Yeah, Chris, I think Paul, I'm glad you brought that up because, Chris, did you ever get to changing that?
I I did. I mean, I have it on my home copy. I was waiting for tonight before anything official, but I I think we had discussed bumping it up to the maximum three hundred dollars.
Yeah, we're we're going to bump that up. Yeah, I agree with, and I mentioned that to Chris Paul. I said twenty-five dollars is ridiculous.
It's a parking ticket.
Yeah, that that we're putting it up to three hundred dollars. And every day a violation continues is another potential for a fine.
Excellent. Very good. I I just said one, one other thing, and it's it kind of ties into the accessory dwelling unit, so maybe you want to wait for that for tomorrow for that?
Yeah, maybe we should, just because we could really get into the weeds with that here.
Okay, can can I just preface it so you can maybe think about it till tomorrow? One of it, it's that you allow, the proposal would be to allow accessory dwelling units in every district. But the accessory dwelling unit cannot be rented short term. So I'm wondering, what's the difference between the accessory dwelling unit being in the the house, the existing house? Between that and a two-family? So what what how, what is the difference between having a two-family or an accessory dwelling?
You want to hold that, Chris? That's a good question. You want to, let's hold that for tomorrow, okay?
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Toby, you ready to go?
Yes. Am I on?
Yes.
Toby Arsenean ninety-five Granite Street. I find the format of it unfortunate because I had hoped that you were going to go through it page by page and section by section so that people might offer their comments on the individual parts. I have reams of comments and, you know, can't possibly get through them in three minutes nor even ten. Starting at the beginning on the definitions.
Let me make us a guest into you. And you've got that many individual comments. There's nothing wrong with you submitting in writing, rather than, you know, going through every little for everybody to hear. You can, you know, people can submit written comments.
I I would hope to do that at some point for some things, which I think you might correct. But others perhaps not. I would hold off till the town meeting, which might not be an advantage. I don't know.
Hold off till town meeting because if there's, if there's something that that uh, we should correct or that you found that is not right, and we want to do that now.
Okay, well, then I'll start. And when you've exhausted your patience, you know, you can shut me off and I'll curse you. Starting on page three, you're going to eliminate bulkheads. I think that's a mistake. I don't, you know, the bulkheads don't belong in the setbacks and yet there they are. And the larger and higher they are, the more obtrusive they are. On the next page five, green infrastructure. That's certainly trendy, but I'm not sure that those are things that are being regulated or how they could possibly be regulated. And gross floor area, you know, on the fourth line down, subsurface basements. The trouble with that, and it it really is difficult, I don't know how you nail it, is that often basements are on a slope and at what point are they subsurface? So in in cases where the planning board did the site plan review, there was one particularly painful one over on Penrin Way, the battleship Wilshire, where they approved something and at the end, what you ended up with, they were distressed. It looked like three and a half stories. It was ruled legally to be two and a half because it was on a slope. That's a problem. I too had the thought about lots and buildable lots. The building inspector has got that. Let's see. Potential drinking water sources. We're now on page nine. Why would you want to take that out? They are potentially very important. I'm not sure how much protection we give them, but anything that was designated as a watershed district, whether or not it's being used, it is really important. And unless the DPW commissioners specifically signed off on that, I would think it a terrible mistake. Then further on the same page, why are you taking out seasonal uses? I'm puzzled. What's the rationale on that? On the next page, the water supply overlay district. I'll tell you, you find fault with the wording of it and so do I. I fought with them bitterly over it. And it's full of verbiage that is very confusing, citing all sorts of state regulations and
Let me stop you on that because I mentioned this earlier. And we'll, we'll talk about this later, but we're not gonna, we're not going to submit to town meeting supply protection overlay. It'll be next, maybe the fall town meeting, so you don't have to worry about talking about that.
Okay, okay. Now I'm down to page fourteen where we're talking about extension and enlargement. And you've renumbered it in a way that I don't quite follow. It's not clear what's gone missing. Not clear at all, which it should be if you're asking people to decide on it. You've deleted a number of things. And there, permit not required, which means you're giving a green light under what was six and you've renumbered two. A, such extension enlargement change or alternation alteration shall not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing use. Well, substantially more detrimental, how could it be anything other than totally subjective? I mean, can you write standards for it? Is that possible? And then in the next paragraph, which is B, the second sentence, this provision does not apply to one and two family structures, but does apply to non-residential structures and residential buildings of two or more units. Well, I'm, all of them, if they're going up in your backyard, where you'd rather not see them, are are equally unfortunate. I would say that is a mistake.
Twenty-one seconds, so why don't you hit the high points and wrap it up within the minute, okay?
I can't possibly say anything in twenty-one seconds. I will tell you that the coastal floodplain maps, which are supposed to be at the town clerk's office are not there. And conceivably, someone might say it's not a proper public hearing unless you produce the maps. Even then, they should have been on file down there. I don't think this is proceeding in good faith and I strongly object to it. Thank you.
Who's next?
Eric Hutchins. You've been unmuted.
Eric Hutchins from forty-five Poole's Lane. You got me, right?
Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, super. Anyway, I just wanted to, I'm actually really, I I'm amazed at the amount of work that the planning board put into this effort. I can't say I've read everything in detail, but a major effort and everything I see is in good intention, so I got to congratulate you there. I do appreciate you holding off on the watershed protection provisions. And again, I think everything there is good intended. I just think there's a number of little minutias that need to be worked over to to perfect that in the fall town meeting or whenever we can get it done. And I've dusted off a lot of my files and I'm, I for one, working on it in the past as a planning board member, have offered to help in any way that I can. But I really, I don't actually have any opposition to what you're trying to do with the watershed overlay provisions, which you've brought, but what you've put together is excellent. Thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot, Eric. Really appreciate it.
I believe that's everyone.
That's everyone?
I do not see any other hands on the screen. I'm looking.
Hi, Jason. Something I just noticed today, I'm sorry, I missed it earlier, in the coastal floodplain. floodplain definitions, it certainly is all based on the FEMA maps. The issue I've discovered today is that it's very specifically stating the 2014 version of the maps, which is indeed current, but it's pending a revision. So I'm wondering, in order to keep these bylaws current going forward, if it should be stated that it's whatever is the current FEMA accepted map.
That can be, that can usually be changed, Tom, so.
Otherwise, you'll have people referring back to obsolete.
What you're saying. So you're talking about it should be the current.
Yes.
The FEMA map that is currently in force.
Yes.
Okay.
And I think there is a layer on the town GIS map system that has those. But that would be unofficial because you have to go to FEMA for the absolute.
Anything else? Nobody else? Okay. Then we're going to. There are no other comments. Nobody else. Then going once, going twice, we are going to have a motion. Does anybody want to make a motion to close a public hearing?
Second.
Yeah, who did the first? Who made the motion?
Tom did.
Tom, okay. Tom moved to close. Denise seconds. All in favor will take a roll call vote. Tom?
Aye.
Denise?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
And I also vote to close the public hearing. I want to comment a little on the what I alluded to earlier, but now it's kind of the right time, I think, is the it's the water supply protection overlay district, not waters, not watershed, but water supply. Big difference. But that's the name of the section. And it was, it's a little bit of history that that was revised last summer by me with consulting with the DEP and with Eric Hutchins, who is terrific. Kind of institutional knowledge for this area. And we we got to this week and, you know, I sat down with Eric, we talked about a couple of things. There are a couple of things that continue. It's a very kind of technical tedious section, I have to say that. And we've we've clarified it. We've cleared up some real conflict within it. And I won't go into everything now, but it still needs some additional work. It's not ready for primetime yet. So what I'm going to ask, I'll just ask the full board, I think it's appropriate, is take to make a motion to withdraw the revised water supply overlay protection district rewrite from the documents that will ultimately be submitted to the warrant for voting on the at the town meeting in this spring. To in other words, we're not, that is now being, I'm not being very articulate here, that that section will be removed from what we're submitting for to the town meeting. And for consideration at another time, meaning then, you know, the following time meeting. But it will be it will be redone. It's just not going to be redone or reconsidered at this coming meeting. So I need a just a motion to clear that up, that that's why we're not doing it. A motion to to withdraw it from consideration for the April 2022 town meeting.
Jason, I'll move to withdraw the revision, but I believe that also means you leave the existing version intact.
That's usually what happens when you don't, when you withdraw the revision, everything stays exactly the same.
Okay, so we're not removing the section, we're removing the revision.
No, we're just removing the revised version is gone.
Okay.
Yeah. Seconded by Peter. I'll take a roll call vote. Denise?
Aye.
Tom? Peter?
Aye.
I'll vote in favor too. So that will not, that will be removed, Chris, from from the draft that we're going to be submitting ultimately. Okay. And by the way, along with that, is that the map that the draft map, the draft map, it was not the final map, that was submitted to reflect those changes is also part of that. And so we're back to the map as it is now, as flawed as it is now, but as it is now, with the only change being the potential transit oriented village overlay district. That will be the one change to the official map that at this point that will be considered at the town meeting. Okay? So done. Right. So you folks, same time tomorrow.
That's good.
Good. And Chris, we'll be we'll be talking about some of these comments. I think some of them are, you know, justified and need to be incorporated into our into our draft. Don't you?
Yes, very much so.
Yeah, okay. Great. Thank you, people. All members of the public who participated, either by commenting or listening, your participation is much appreciated. And we did listen to you and we are, you know, there are going to be some changes made based on what people have said tonight. So it does work. Thank you. And have a good night.
Night.
Take care, everybody.
Do we have any other business after closing the hearing?
No, because that's all that's on the agenda.
All right, then you need a motion to adjourn.
I do.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Seconded by Peter. Roll call vote, Tom? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I said aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear that.
She's gone already.
Okay, I'll vote in favor.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.